Please introduce yourself and where you come from.
I'm Reverend Bill Gilmore from Saint Mary's Episcopal Church here in Benita Springs. Let us pray. Dear Lord God, we thank you for all the blessings that we have received and for our time here together. Dear Lord, please watch over and protect all those who serve the city of Benita Springs and for those first responders that are in our community. Dear God, be with those who live on the fringes of our community and who need our protection most and foremost. Be with the hearts of those that are in attendance here tonight, that they may respectfully and with love present their petitions to their city council. And Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those on city council the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people in the city of Benita Springs through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you. We're going to pledge allegiance on three. One, two. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, well, Momma Deb, you get to call the roll call.
Councilman Gorgas? Here. Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Bullock?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Okay. The mayor, approval of the minutes? I don't think they have any changes on the minutes. So we go through that. Mayor's welcome. You're all welcome. There was a question about how we handle these, that we know what we're going to do before we get them to this meeting. Well, we receive what I call a packet, which is something like this for this meeting, from the staff that gives us all the information we need to know about the subject that's coming up on the agenda. We get that on Friday afternoon. We have the whole weekend. Monday and Tuesday, we can approach the staff if we have any questions as to what the information that was given to us. So when we do come up on Wednesday, we should know where we stand on all the issues. We do make comments, but we do not debate. So that's how that works, and I'm pleased that everybody's here. We're not going to have a debate, going back and forth. Some people would think they want to watch a circus, but that's not the way it's going to be. So we have a sunshine law, which means that we cannot communicate with each other. In my case, I'm all business. I'm all city business, all Benita. And I can't communicate with these other council people because things might come up to where we have to vote. We can't be in collusion. There's also, we can't say, I talked to George, and okay, George, you talk to this other council person and tell them how I feel. That's a conduit. That's illegal also. So this is, because of the sunshine, we all have our independent thinking, and we come in to this meeting independent and responsible for our own actions. And that's the way it is. And now we go to public comment. Any comment about the agenda? Mayor, I mean attorney?
We only have one item, Mr. Mayor, that is a public hearing, and that is item 12A. That's review the city's draft evaluation appraisal report. So if there's anyone who wish to speak to that item, we'd ask that you hold until that public hearing. But if you have any other items that are on the public hearing tonight, or I'm sorry, any other items that are up for consideration tonight, please come up and speak.
Thank you. My name is Kyle Moran. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I first moved to Benita 30 years ago, and I came up here because I've heard a major rumor. And this rumor concerns the expenditure of city funds. It involves key staff, and it traces its origins back nearly a quarter century. And it's coming to a head at this very meeting. Apparently, very shortly after the city was founded, our first city manager, Gary Price, promised his initial team in those early days that before the last one of them retired, the revitalization of our downtown would be complete. Debbie Philipek, who sits on that dais with you, the steady guiding hand as the most important decisions are made in our city, joined our city over 23 years ago and is now about to retire. Thank you, Debbie, for your exceptional service to our city, and thank you for contributing to all that the city has accomplished over this long period of time, including a lot that's been accomplished in our downtown. But sadly, the downtown revitalization that you were promised has not been completed. So we're sorry about that. Our apologies for a promise broken. But let's hope this council can fulfill the promise that other councils have struggled to do. Let's move forward with selecting and erecting great signs across our city, but particularly in that downtown. Let's move forward with finishing public parking in our downtown, and let's move forward with designating downtown pedestrian-friendly. You need to look no further than this past weekend, Benita Fest, a first-of-its-kind event held for Benetians by Benetians for victims in Benita of Hurricane Ian. And that event wildly surpassed all expectations of attendance, so much so that even though it had a planned five hours, it took about an hour and 15 minutes before it completely sold out of food and beverage. It's proof that people want to be in the heart of our community. They want to gather downtown. Unfortunately, when they do so, they have to be right beside a road that is still heavily trafficked by commercial trucks. Keep in mind, 48,000 workers travel each day into Collier County and back. So that means every single day, right in our downtown, right next to the springs that gave our city its name, right next to the Historical Society, right next to our city parks and our city band shell, we have trucks coming from Lehigh and Cape Coral and Fort Myers and other places, going to Naples and back, all in the same day. And those trucks, they damage and disrupt our downtown. Just days ago, we had a truck that came rumbling through our downtown, and it dumped cement from the roundabout down past the coffee shop, about four blocks, ugly drippings of cement for four blocks. It's a real shame. We can put in a common sense truck restriction that follows exceptions that allow people living down there and people doing business down there to get their deliveries, so we don't disrupt local citizens and local businesses. And we're not reinventing the wheel. We're following the practices established by a lot of other cities. In our general area, we have truck restrictions in downtown Sarasota, downtown Clearwater, downtown St. Augustine, downtown Tampa, downtown Orlando, downtown St. Pete, downtown Delray Beach, downtown Miami, downtown West Palm, downtown Stewart. It goes on and on and on. So let's do what they do and figure it out. So Debbie, thank you again for your exceptional service to our city. We're sorry if that promise was in fact broken to you, but we resolved to finishing the revitalization of downtown. And I would ask you, City Council, to please have staff draft a common sense ordinance designating downtown pedestrian-friendly and to bring it back to you for review and future approval. Thanks again.
Thank you, Kyle. Hey kiddo.
Mayor, Council. Amy Kuramba, Pelican Landing, Benita Springs. I would like to make a statement of appreciation for Debbie Philipek, recognizing her 23 years of service. It was a pleasure to interact and work with Debbie Philipek from my first campaign to my last day of service on the council. She is a reliable and efficient communicator and keeper of the records. Beyond that, she added her kind attitude and supportive manner that assisted us with our work. Thank you, Debbie, not only for making my six years on the council easier, but for all the years of your devoted service to Benita Springs. It is through your efforts, such as yours, that allows the city to live up to its motto, "A city of small-town charm and a big, bright future." Thank you so much for everything you've done.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Trish Leonard. I live in District Two. I'm a business owner, and I'm the president of the Benita Springs Downtown Alliance. I want to echo basically what Kyle stated regarding having a pedestrian-friendly downtown with the trucks that go through there. Not only are they going downtown, but they're also now going down Ragsdale and up Matheson, and scares me because of all the little children that are, you know, on those roads and down Goodwin. So I would also recommend that, or at least ask you to consider taking a look at that. And again, there's very many, there's so many cities that do this, it should be not reprimanded. Just kind of do it and look at it for us. For Debbie, I want to say thank you. And I was the other half of the Gary Price side of things, and I want to say thank you for your service, and I cannot believe how big your boys got over the years. But you have been very instrumental to our city, and I want to say thank you very much. So on behalf of all of our Downtown Alliance members, and me being a resident and also a business owner, I want to thank you all, each of you, for all the hard work that you do to make our city a better place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
I am Ron Jewidge from Little Hickory Island, and the first thing I want to do, obviously, is congratulate Debbie and thank her for all the help that she's provided, I know at least me, in the last couple of years. So I really appreciate that. Second of all, over the holidays or before the holidays, I took the advantage of the holiday lights downtown, and I thought, wow, I'll take my wife and my elderly neighbor, elderly being anybody older than me, down for the lights and maybe enjoy some local pizza while we were at it. And it dawned on me real quick how noisy the downtown area is because of the truck traffic. And so I guess I plead with the city if you really want to see the vision that everybody, I think, desires for downtown, that you really do consider a meaningful restriction on trucks in the downtown area.
Good evening. I'm Gary Price, whose name has been taken in vain a couple of times. I wasn't going to say anything, but when I started here back in 2000, March, went to city council, I said, look, you've got this mandate to do government light. The only way we're going to pull this off is if I can steal employees. And one of the employees we managed to steal was Debbie Philipek from Lee County. We needed employees that knew their way around courthouse, knew their way to the courthouse, knew people up at the courthouse, and knew their way around. And Debbie was one of those people, and we could always depend on her to do her job. Secondly, I came here after 30 years' experience because I saw an opportunity, what could be done with old Benita. Believe it or not, back when I worked for Sanibel, I made some suggestions they need to do with regard to upgrading their downtown. They did not take those suggestions. Maybe with the damage that has occurred there, they will do some things. It's terribly dated, and they needed to have something done. After 30 years, I saw an opportunity to, one, finish my career by starting a city, because I'd come to Sanibel after three years, and, two, develop downtown Benita and what it could be accomplished. I'm sorry, Kyle, that we didn't manage to do it, but I think we made a lot of steps in the right way that allows the city council to finish that job in the way it should be done. But I want to congratulate Debbie and thank her and the other employees smiling, sitting next to her. There are a number of employees that we worked with for many, many years, and they really are the backbone of your community, and I hope you can replace her with somebody that's equally as competent and is easy to get along with as Debbie Philipek. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir.
Mayor, City Council, for the record, Don Colopetro. Been a resident of Benita for 47 years, worn a few hats, fire department, LPA, what have you. Debbie has been a good friend, and she was always the go-to when I had a problem or a question. I knew who I could call, and it's been a pleasure, Debbie, and I wish you the best. Just enjoy it. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? City manager, if I have a thing on here. Proclamation, presentation, and recognition of City Clerk Deborah Philipek. Over 23 years, we come forward, or what do we want to do? The whole county knows you. Debbie came from us, from working for Lee County for a big part of her life, and now 23 years here. I guess she's got about 35, 40 years of working. So anyways, how about a city manager can do a better job introducing us?
Thank you. Thank you. On behalf of Mayor and Council, we do have a plaque here to honor Debbie today, and it does say, "The city of Benita Springs with our greatest appreciation, and hereby we honor Deborah Ann Philipek. In recognition of your over 23 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Benita Springs, your loyalty, friendship will long be remembered." So when I started with the city, one of the most welcoming faces that I received was Debbie's face. She always has a smile. She has a joke. She has the warmest heart, and she has an extreme love for her boys and her granddaughter, Ava. So if you'll, excuse me, I'm going to change a little words of Dr. Seuss's, The Places You Will Go. Oh, the places you will go, today is your day. Your mountain is waiting. Your Ava is waiting. So go on your way, go quick, but we will miss you. And no distance of place or lapse of time can lessen a friendship. Those who are thoroughly persuaded of each other's worth. And Deborah, you are worth a million.
It's been a privilege to serve, and I've enjoyed the many years that I've been here. But now it's time to relax, enjoy my family, enjoy my Ava, enjoy my sons. Thank you.
Here, boys, here, guys, why don't you both, one of you have one of these.
Hey, Jesse!
You guys are good.
No, no, no!
Way to go, Jesse.
Nice job. So with that, Mayor and Council, Ms. Deborah Ann Philipek has given me her last request for time off, so she will be heading out to enjoy dinner with her family.
Motion to adjourn?
A scurvy flower.
It was worth a shot.
Okay, well, we have a proclamation, kind of lengthy. Whereas the city of Benita Springs has experienced severe weather in the past in forms of extreme rainfall and tropical systems, events resulting in flooding in both coastal and ravine areas. And this flooding has caused damage and flood losses to homes and buildings in all areas, whether they are high-risk special flood hazard areas or low to moderate flood zone. And whereas the city of Benita Springs is a voluntary participant in national flood insurance program that provides residents with the opportunity to protect themselves against flood loss through the purchase of flood insurance at reduced insurance premium rates, as well as setting high regulatory standards to reduce the flood risk and potential flood damage to their properties. And whereas a reduction of loss of life property damage can be achieved when appropriate flood preparedness, control, mitigation measures are taken before a flood. And whereas public education and awareness and potential weather hazards and methods of protection are critical to the health, safety, and welfare of residents, the Florida Flood Managers Association have declared the week of March 6, 2023, as Flood Awareness Week to promote awareness and increase knowledge of flood risk and the availability of flood insurance, flood protection methods, and how to prepare for emergencies. Now, therefore, I, Rick Steinmeier, on behalf of City Council, do hereby declare the week of March 6, 2023, as Flood Awareness Week in the city of Benita Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is part of our requirements of our NFIP participation and program. I did want to thank community development staff, especially AIDA, your floodplain coordinator, who's also a member of the Floodplain Coorders Association. We're going to post the proclamation on our website as well, and we'll continue to provide awareness to the community.
Okay, next, we have a presentation.
Yes.
by McCann and Associates, please, in reference to truck traffic on Old 41. So thank you, sir, and introduce yourself, and away we go.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Mr. Mayor?
That's one I want.
I'll introduce. This is John DePalma from McMahon and Associates, which is a consultant that the city uses for transportation issues. And he's going to present you a very brief presentation on some truck count data that we have, where we counted the types of trucks that are traveling along Old 41's corridor, and we counted them back, I think it was last spring.
Yes.
Without further ado, John will present you what we found and how it compares to other corridors nationwide.
Thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, my name's John DePalma. I'm a principal with McMahon and Associates. As Matt said, we're your transportation consultant. I'm going to give you just a few facts this evening on the Old 41 corridor. We count approximately 45 to 55 different locations across the city, even on the weekends in some periods. We do this during the spring, during, probably before the Easter holiday, before the snowbirds leave, so we capture what is the true traffic measurement without altering numbers or adjusting them, as we do when we work with FDOT or other county governments. As you can see by this particular slide, we have truck, I'm sorry, we have traffic measurements on Old 41 Road prior to the roundabout construction. Now, that's important because when West East Terry Street was just a intersection controlled by a traffic light and not a roundabout, we were measuring traffic. Oftentimes, when we do do traffic counts within the city, we stay away from construction zones because the traffic is completely altered. It's not consistent with what would be if it were built. So we have before numbers and after numbers. These are what's called average daily traffic. There's about 11,116 vehicles that average daily travel on Old 41 Road in 2016 and 2017. It went up 13 percent after the roundabout, as you can see, to 12,552. That's not uncharacteristic of that roadway. That roadway can handle that traffic volume. It's a two-lane road. Generally speaking, FDOT has thresholds and tables for what's a two-lane road. Anywhere from 16,000 to 22,000 vehicles a day can travel on a two-lane road. We took advantage of the existing traffic count locations, and they were coincident with what we wanted to look at around the roundabout, and I'll tell you about that in a second. But these are the four different points. They're not at the exact location, somewhere a little further northwest or east or south. But we took advantage of those counts. We've been doing this since 2012, a decade. We use a subconsultant firm that's local. We're local, so we know what traffic patterns exist within the city. We usually debrief the city staff every year after we collect the data, usually around the middle of March. This diagram represents the different classifications of trucks that's quantified by FHWA and FDOT. You'll see red squares around the trucks that we wanted to pick up as an emphasis to the condition along Old 41 Road. They're class three, five, and six. They deal with axles. We use what's called automatic traffic recorder devices, indoor cameras. In this case, because of the traffic and the challenge sometimes we have with automatic traffic recorder devices, or ATRs, there are hoses across, they're stapled across the road, they're attached to the pavement, they measure the vehicles passing it, and they are spaced accordingly to capture axles or cars, whatever we need to measure. The traffic consultant that we use to measure the data spaces the hoses accordingly. So when the north-south segment of Old 41, and I'm talking about just a little bit north of the roundabout, all the way down to Dean Street, traffic was measured. 70% of the volume that was captured along that corridor was passenger cars. 25% of that mix was a combination of class three, five, and six vehicles, a combination of two, three, four, and five axle vehicles. Axles sometimes that are rigid-body trucks, that are tow-a-trailer, that's a two-wheel or two-axle trailer. On East-West Terry Street, we measured 72% passenger cars and 20% of the same mix of classification of vehicles. and twenty percent of the same mix of classification of vehicles, three, five, and six. Now, the reason we looked at both east and west and north and south, because we didn't have the crystal ball as per se what the picture would look like physically. It wasn't a camera, it was just the hoses. So we have to capture the volume coming in, the volume going out. Our technicians can then subtract it and develop these particular percentages you see. Matt mentioned you heard comparatively to industry standards. FHWA and FDOT measure truck miles annually. They also comparatively look at that based on growth and development. So it's not just something in a rural community versus an urban community. The average truck percentage mix in, uh, travel is four and a half to six percent, but it can be as high as eight. So if you just remember that slide from a couple of seconds ago I told you about, let's, let's review it. Here again is the standard, four and a half to six is a rule of thumb, or as high as eight. But we measured twenty-five percent traffic, truck traffic on north-south Old 41, from just north of the roundabout all the way down to Dean Street. So that, those, that concludes the facts. Matt, if you wanted to add anything?
Well, I mean, I know that you've, you've heard a lot from the public about trucks. I, I just thought that this would be helpful in, in any decisions that you may wish to make, uh, to see how we stack up with the trucks running through Old 41. So you're, you're not hearing anecdotally or seeing photographs. You know, the data shows that we're, what is that, ten percent? If you're conservative, above the national average for, for what your mix would be. So that is indicating that you've got a higher concentration of trucks traveling through that corridor.
It's like three times.
Well, I said conservative.
Eight is twenty-four, right?
And to emphasize, we often look at what's called peak hours. The peak hours on this corridor generally seven to eight and four to five. So you can imagine, it's the morning traffic, comings and going to work, uh, work vehicles. Uh, there are tractor and trailers, and the percentage of school bus traffic along that road. You all have a school off of Dean Street. Uh, so I saw a lot of US food trucks over the time delivering food to certain services. As one gentleman pointed out, you will still need truck delivery to your businesses because your businesses are right up against your sidewalk corridor, based on your planning and zoning, and it's an attractive corridor.
A while back, Deputy Mayor, um, Fred Forbes made a motion that we limit the trucks. And I'd like to reintroduce your motion to limit unnecessary trucks from coming downtown. And we will have to coordinate with our Sheriff's Department, but warnings, and then be serious and give tickets, and...
I make a point. Would you consider amending it? Otherwise, I'll make one after yours passes.
No, I'm, I'm...
Get to ask, add to it what you said, to immediately draft up an ordinance that would come back to us for our review first reading. And these numbers, he said four at the low end, six was not unreasonable, eight is way up. So it's really probably four times.
Discussion?
Do you have any suggestions? You're just giving us the, uh, the facts.
We wanted to give you the facts first. There are a number of suggestions that could be done. As the one gentleman said during public comment phase, we've studied a lot of different cities around the state of Florida that have instituted, uh, truck restrictions. They initially do it with what's called no-through trucks. You position those signs that are regulatory signs, they're white and black. There's different levels of signing that are regulatory, some are warning, some are advisory. A white and black sign is regulatory, that means it can be ticketed, Madam Carr. So you, you look at putting those kinds of signs at the bookends of your situation. So north of the roundabout, why? So they don't go through the roundabout, but they can exit and go east or west Terry Street. Likewise, at the southerly end, you want to capture them before they come into Dean because you certainly don't want them going over Dean with school kids, elementary, middle school kids on Dean Street, just to get to, um, uh, Imperial. And you, you know, you, when they come south to north, they could exit west and go to US 41, or exit east and go to Imperial Parkway. Because a lot of the traffic that sometimes we did send roving vehicles with that traffic, they were destined to go out, uh, out east on Bonita East Road, uh, to those communities. And then on the Logan Boulevard, or onto Lealakali.
Why not at Old 41 and New 41 on the north end? If you put a sign there enough.
That, that might be a little too far away, Mr. Mayor, because it would, uh, there's a lot of different opportunities in that stretch near US 41 to, uh, see, the truck traffic could come down and exit and go to different roadways within the community.
It's only Terry Street.
No, you can go over Shangri-La to Imperial. And Shangri-La is kind of a two-lane road, uh, very, very narrow, has a lot of other roads north and south that come into it.
Okay, yes.
I think Jesse, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Jesse.
Um, I conceptually, as I've, I've stated numerous times, am in favor of a bikeable, walkable pedestrian downtown. I think this is a very important thing. I, I don't want to get ahead of our skis in regards to the actual implementation because this isn't just a, I mean, it's been said quite a few times, this is a very simple thing. The reality is, if, if we're going to have an ordinance, the ordinance has to have teeth. That means we have to have a, a mechanism in order to, to enforce it, or then it's just a mechanism for the face, sake of mechanism, uh, of creating something to feel better. And I don't believe in doing that. That being said, I talked to Captain Blake, and I stated that assuming this were to pass, once we get recommendations from the staff on what it would look like, he would then sit down, we'd go over it, and he would talk about, you know, how they've done it and implemented it in other cities and what it looks like. But I can't really, it's, it's hard to, we've been in a situation, like, for people who haven't been paying attention to this, we've been in a situation for law enforcement in the city, in the city of Bonita Springs, where we have, for a very long time, up until two or three years ago, we actually, we, we never addressed about a forty percent increase in population as far as the officers go. So we've been on the path of getting more officers. Something like this, since we have a twenty-four-hour police unit, right? One position is four positions, right? So if I have eight officers, ten officers, thirteen officers, whatever we have out in the city, now, one of those is now reallocated from wherever that is to here to make sure that the signs are being taken care of. I'm not saying that can't happen, but what I'm saying is before we, we decide to quickly say, hey, this is how we need to do it, there needs to be an action plan in conjunction with LCSO to make sure that we are not in any way shortchanging the rest of the city because we are already behind on officers. We have sixty thousand people. We're running it like we have forty thousand. So to put, you know, if we have, again, a ten, ten-person using unit, for sake of argument, to have even one of those in a sixty thousand person town, simply making sure that trucks are going where they're supposed to go or not, is, is, you know, a questionable use of, 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 of resources. So, again, not saying there isn't a path to getting there, but it isn't some easy, hey, we need to just do this right now path because that type of thinking is not, it's very short-sighted. So we need to, if we want to do it, and I'm in favor of doing it, I ran on a downtown. I, I'm very big on the downtown, but it needs to be done appropriately. And I, I think that that means we can get the stuff from the staff, but we sit down with LCSO, and we look at what Sarah said, and we look at what everybody else, and then we get to a first reading. I'm not saying get to a first reading in two weeks because are we going to get with Blake between now and then? And are we going to be able to evaluate all this stuff between now and then? If the answer is no, then we're wrong.
You guys want to flip a coin? Nigel, go ahead.
I'm going to defer to my younger brother.
Eight before beauty, okay.
You know, I, I can remember the last time that we talked about this and, and, uh, the motion that Fred read, Laura, and concern about a lot of words and so forth. I would like to simply have you perhaps amend your motion to say, to direct staff to work with Fred, to develop a green sheet that sets forth an ordinance that they mutually agree would work, and to run that green sheet and that ordinance by our community policing function and bring it forward to us for first reading. I don't know that we need to start debating the wording of an ordinance nor the way in which it would be implemented, but I think the appropriate way to move forward is to have staff work with Fred and the Lee County Sheriff's Office to come and bring back to us, after however long it takes, hopefully, one or two council meetings, we would have a first reading. So that's, I would ask that you consider making that your motion.
And I'm, I'm in support if it changes that way.
Okay, I, uh, hang on, Nigel. Now, I keep reading that the people want a pedestrian-friendly neighborhood or street. And I have, don't know what that means, except you gave me a definition of a pedestrian-friendly street. And if we're going to write an ordinance, I think we ought to put that into the ordinance. Could you...
Oh, I think that would, that would probably conflict with the truck issue. I mean, pedestrian-friendly corridor, you already have. It's a narrow corridor, it's traffic calmed by brick paver enhancements, a couple roundabouts, pedestrian-defined crossing zones, sidewalks adjacent to, uh, parallel parking. All those things make up a pedestrian-friendly corridor, all those different characteristics. So you already have it. You don't have to define it. It was designed and built light like that, Mr. Mayor. What you're doing now, you're trying to address, uh, issues that are, uh, impacting that pedestrian-friendly safety, the longevity of your pavement surface. You know, when you start measuring axle loads, uh, we do a lot of pavement design. Your pavement won't last long. Your brick pavers will get beat up, they'll start popping out of the pavement. Your pavement might have settlement. The stopping and starting of a vehicle will shift the top surface of the asphalt. Cars don't necessarily do that. You can get anywhere from twelve to fifteen years out of just asphalt in Florida. Yes, it fades as soon as the sun hits it. We can't do anything about that. It's Florida. Uh, won't be black too long, but it, it's a nice rideable surface.
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, I appreciate the data. This was something I'd asked for. But in the meantime, from the meeting when we were talking about getting the facts, I have a fifteen-year career in law enforcement when I was young, before you were born. And the bottom line is that this is not something that we're creating here. Hundreds of cities have these ordinances. Secondly, reaching out to friends at the Broward County Sheriff's Office, Dade County, they've experienced all of this on a much greater degree. And at the end of the day, if you took two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon, we've solved about eighty percent of our problem. Would that be accurate as far as what we're doing as far as road damage, what we're doing as far as noise downtown, and what we'll do to alleviate the issue that we have with traffic on that corridor? One of our citizens makes a comment about taking our downtown and not making it a shortcut anymore. I agree with that. That's what we can do. But here's what I heard from the people that do it for a living. It's learned behavior. We set up a thirty-day or forty-five-day window where we tell the truckers, you can't come down here between these hours. Then you enforce it for sixty to ninety days. At that time, after a hundred and twenty days, ninety percent of your problem is solved. Learned behavior. They know they can't come down here, they'll find another route. So it's not that complicated, and we shouldn't make it that complicated.
Keep it simple.
Okay, what do I need here?
I, I, I think this was part of this.
Oh, with, yeah, so, what, did you amend your, did, was it amended?
I want it done sooner than later, and I actually love what Nigel...
All right, so, let's just say, we have specifically, I've specifically spoken with LCSO, who has stated that they find this to be problematic, and they would like to see what these solutions look like so they could discuss it. So these are the people in charge of keeping us safe, and I think that we should listen to what they say. And if that's an extra meeting to make sure that we do it the appropriate way, then I think that's what we do.
I disagree. Derek, you were gonna...
One at a time, one at a time.
Derek had something to say.
I, I, so I'll probably be drafting the ordinance, I just want to throw my, the, the ordinance is not...
Jamie's, Jamie's got the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry. So if we, um, go forward with this ordinance, can you put some kind of timeline on it where, I mean, everyone is in a rush to get it done, everyone wants it done, it's been going on for a long time. Is there any way we can, if we put this forward, that we...
So I think there's two, two issues. What Derek will probably tell you is the ordinance is not the most difficult part of it. What, the implementation is what we're going to need the help from McMahon Associates. The appropriate location of the signage, that needs to be coordinated with LCSO so that they have appropriate mechanisms to enforce. The other thing that we want to make clear is, I, I think in conversations with LCSO, an education process needs to happen first, not necessarily, you know, right to the hardcore ticket.
Oh, absolutely.
So, so there, there'll be some part on the city's responsibility to do some outreach as well, some, uh, you know, some publications that this is coming, and, and as it's coming so that, so that folks know and are aware, and then working on, you know, a warning system. But if the LCSO does not know the exact locations of the signs, how they can implement their operations, that is a separate piece of the ordinance.
Yeah, so the, the ordinance, the ordinance is not a, a difficult issue. What I, in fact, so the, the more, we talk about the ordinance, I think the more we're adding to it, which is actually going to extend the time necessary to draft it. So what I would prefer is a very simple ordinance that says the city council may establish no truck through zones. And then the enforcement mechanism. Enforcement mechanisms are fairly limited, but it'll be through the, we'll, we'll coordinate with that with the Sheriff's Department. And then you can adopt resolutions designating certain roads, no through tr... That way, we don't have to do this reinvent the wheel every time we have another street or another area of downtown. We just make a finding that this road should be, um, you know, no, no through trucks and adopt the resolution doing it. So I, I would prefer to do an ordinance that can be expanded in the future rather than specific to one neighborhood.
Okay, I'll amend mine to, motion to that.
City manager, can you come back every, every meeting for the next few meetings with a report on the progress that we're making on this?
We, we can give you a verbal opt-in, but I think, I think what Derek's suggesting is, first, we look at a, at a more, as lack of better word, bare-bones ordinance type that gives you the structure. In between there, we would like to work with McMahon Associates on the engineering of the particular locations of signage, how we implement that, and that has to be a sit-down conversation with LCSO at the same time.
Yeah, it'd also be, Arlene, it'd also be with the county traffic staff because they approve your signs.
Yep.
You can report on the progress every meeting for, till we get to south. How's that? Does that make everybody happy?
No.
Make some progress.
I, I think what Derek said was he wanted to prepare an ordinance for first reading that would be a general, that wouldn't say what street or whatever, so it could be expanded and contracted. And that, that can be done right away, and then you have to have, while that's going on, McMahon and the sheriff and us have to huddle up the numbers to agree.
Mr. Mayor, I could have, I could have an ordinance ready for your, your April, first April meeting.
I just want to clarify, do you want, in that ordinance, do you want this corridor to be the, also identified by resolution? Or, I mean, how does that work? So you're going to get a shell ordinance that...
I have a progress every two weeks, every, every meeting till we get to south.
I'm, I'm happy to walk you through it.
It's not going to be south overnight.
This, the ordinance will still require two readings. So you'll do your first reading April first. That means we have in a draft. That draft can be circulated to the public, to the, to the Sheriff's Office. Between that and the second reading, if we want to adopt a companion resolution at the second reading for downtown, which would be their second meeting in April, you could do that. So that would, that, to me, that would be the timeline, be the fastest to get it resolved. And that gives you time to work with people in between.
Sounds great.
So you amend your motion to, to reflect on...
Whatever Derek just said.
I'll second that.
Any other comment? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bogas? Councilmember Pardon?
To clarify, we are saying that staff is coming back with an ordinance. Prior to that, we were talking to LCSO before we're voting on it, correct?
Yes.
Okay, aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. We're going to get this done. Get it done, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, uh, even though it's, kind of relates this...
Thank you, John.
Can, can our assistant city manager at the next meeting come and give a little presentation on the award that we got for Old Downtown being a complete street and all that? And described to as a national organization, gave us the award, but we never got to officially publicly accept it. So I think the public needs to know more about that award.
Is, and... Fred, take that to the city manager. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Around this, the consent agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion is second?
Who seconded, I'm sorry?
I did. Oh, no.
Councilman Forbes seconded.
Okay. Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
You have to speak up, please.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Boges?
Aye.
Very good. Okay, where are we at here?
I think you're wanting my report.
Benita Grand, no, not a public hearing, on the ear report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jackie Gensen, can you go forward? I believe Dr. Bannion is remote.
Yes, Dr. Bannion is available by Zoom. I'll check with.
So as a reminder, this is the first reading on the city's draft of the evaluation appraisal report. Your second, upon council's approval, your second reading would be at our upcoming meeting on March 15th.
Good afternoon. For the record, Jacqueline Gensen with Community Development. So those joining us via live stream or recording, this is, we're coming to the end of our evaluation appraisal review report process. We did retain FGCU, so Dr. Bannion and her team have near the end of their report. It is a draft report that is available. This is the first public hearing for this process. Our comprehensive plan does require us to have two public hearings, so this is our first one. We're here tonight just to kind of go over any questions you or the public may have. But we do have a second public hearing scheduled for March 15th. And at that meeting, we plan to go ahead and present the report for your direction to send a letter up to the state. And without further ado, we have Dr. Bannion.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just want to reiterate, what Jackie noted is that we won't be doing a full presentation this evening, but we will hold that full presentation on the 15th. So again, it's a good opportunity to take any comment, any questions as we move into, if there is a second draft required, we'll have the opportunity to take that input and think about things that may come up tonight. So I will stay online and just be available if there are questions or comments.
Yes, Dr., I see that you have a lot of comments. You didn't write the comprehensive plan seven years ago, did you?
So it's been through several changes. That's a very good question. So the initial comprehensive plan was written when the city was initiated, founded. And then it's been through several different revisions. Seven years ago, what we did was evaluated the comprehensive plan to be consistent with state law. We went through the same process seven years ago. And since then, the comp plan's been amended to some degree. So there's been some sections that have been amended, and so it's a work in, a work in progress, more or less.
Well, I see you said almost, about half of the comments say it could, it could be revised or changed. Is that necessary at this time, or is that what you're gonna send to the state that said this could be changed, or?
Yeah, also a really great question and an important aspect of clarification. So the areas, when you look in Appendix B, and that's the very long table at the back of the document, what you see are three columns, and that's every policy that's in the plan, as well as if there is a recommendation. The column that says state required, what that means is that it would be required to be amended to be consistent with state law. Then there's another column that says optional, and that's something that just would, may improve the plan, purely optional. And then the last column is no comment. So the other part of your question is that the document that you see before you, we will not send that document to the state. The state will get, the only thing the state will receive is what's called the ear determination letter. And that letter, I believe you also have a copy of, a draft copy of that letter. And that letter basically just says that there are changes that will be required to be consistent with state law. So again, the only thing that the State Department of Economic Opportunity will receive is a copy of that letter. That report that you see in front of you, the long 138, 40-page report, that's just for council, the city, and/or future consultants to use to make the changes that may be necessary next year.
Next year or seven years from now?
No, next year, sir. So part of the requirements of the evaluation and appraisal review is that state law has changed within those seven years. And the city is required, there are certain amendments, as Dr. Bannion recorded, in the state required checkbox, that we have to amend. While we do that, it's always beneficial to review those items that might be of interest to the city to make those optional amendments during that same process. Because we will be holding public hearings and public workshops to review the state required amendments, it's a good opportunity. If you recall, we used the process last time to look at overlays for the quadrant plan. So that, and also overlays for the intersection of Benita Beach Road and Old 41, so that the state could recognize the city's intent for context-sensitive infrastructure. We also made references to our bicycle pedestrian master plan so that future developments, both public sector and private developments that come forward, then are consistent with that comprehensive plan.
Now, this comprehensive plan can be changed at any time, is that right?
Both by the, by the city, mayor and city council, you can make amendments and go through the state, the process that's set up by the state. Additionally, developers can come forward and petition you all for comprehensive plan amendments.
We're not dictating to the next generation of council.
Correct, correct. That, at any time, the council can make a decision to set forth amendments to the comprehensive plan.
Very good. Any other questions?
I do.
Yes.
I found it odd, Dr. Bannion, good to see you again, that lighting was so far down on the list of what would encourage you to cycle or walk. And it was only, it was under 30%, and you go out in some of these streets here in Benita, and it is dark and scary. I mean, because you don't know where to go. You don't know who's coming at you. And so I thought that was kind of odd, and new roads was really low on the list also. And I believe Assistant Manager Matt Feeney began saying, we need to deal with infrastructure. And so I do believe those two issues I'd like to see addressed.
So the, I think you're referring to the public input survey, maybe?
Mm-hmm.
Is, yeah. So one of the things that, that I always encourage people to look at with the survey is that that's one, one piece of data for you to look at. It certainly isn't the entire, all of the entire data, and, so that's public input. And that particular question, I think, was a priority question. So among all of the safety features, that's how the results came out. So, so that's really something, I think, that, and in terms of any new road construction or any of the other things that you see in that survey, understand, of course, that, that that's, that's one piece, certainly feedback from the public. And these are things that I think that you can take when you actually move to optional amendments to the plan. They're things to consider.
And of course, technology advances, solar maybe would be a factor, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, this is move on?
This is a public hearing, so I would open it up to see if there's any members of the public who should speak on this item.
Public comment on the ear? Okay. 13A, is that yours?
That's mine, Mr. Mayor.
You negotiated a contract.
We need a motion to send the letter. I'm sorry, I apologize. Move to second reading?
Second hearing.
Second hearing on the reading? Okay.
To conduct the second hearing.
We need a motion to conduct this second hearing.
Make a motion to move it to second hearing.
I'll second it. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Boges?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Alright, thank you.
We're at 13A?
Now we are, now we're at mine. I was just so eager to get there. So as was previously mentioned at the end of our workshop, tonight I'm asking you to consider a route study prepared by Holmontez in furtherance of the acquisition of the necessary right-of-way to have for Benita Grand north of East Terry up to the future public park. Rick Brylansky from Holmontez is gonna walk you through briefly the process of selecting a route to shorthand it. One option goes to the west, one goes to the east, one goes straight up the middle, and one sort of meanders to avoid certain areas of consideration. There's a multi-factor test, we'll briefly go through that. I would like you to consider all those, those factors and the recommendation that's being presented for consideration of which map to move forward with.
Okay, yes, sir.
While he's doing that, I'll just, what I'll do is, a little more background on this. The reason for this is, is coming out of the BG Mine Settlement, we are acquiring 30 or more acres at the north end of what appears to be a Benita Grand Drive. But what is actually there is a series of easements that benefit the private property owners. So for a public park, there would not be a, we need to have public access and for that purposes, and the purposes of having a right-of-way designed to city standards. We may need to go forward with acquiring those rights. So that's the purpose of today's hearing, is to look at those alternative plans, select an alternative after consideration, and then we'll move forward from there. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Rick Brylansky. I'm a civil engineer with the firm Holmontez. We were contracted to do this Benita Grand Drive extension route study. And associated with our services, TR Transportation provided traffic analysis, and Dex Bender provided environmental and protected species surveys. The scope of the study is to analyze, review, and evaluate roadway route alternatives for the extension of the public roadway of Benita Grand Drive from East Terry Street proceeding north to the city of Benita Springs Community Park area, and ultimately the Lee County Regional Park as well, which is Larry Cacko Preserve. The study analysis concentrated on five factors: long-range planning, safety, environmental concerns, alternative routes, and costs. This diagram shows the corridor study that we started with, which starts at, starts at East Terry Street, Benita Grand Drive intersection. And this section right here, the hard, solid red line, that shows exact what is currently paved roadway. And then when it turns into a dashed line over here, that's more of a dirt trail right now. And you can see the road somewhat stops right by the Benita Grand Mine. So this project extended the roadway again from East Terry Street all the way to the park site, which is way over here to the north. It's just under three miles in length. And what I want to point out, which I'll get to in more detail, is this is, oops, this is in various segments. The first segment is segment number one, and that's a 100-foot right-of-way. It's treated as a collector road. And then as we proceed, this section also is going to be treated as a collector road. And then when we get further north, this is really a local road standard to the city's standards. So alternate one, again focused on that existing roadway footprint with a 100-foot wide right-of-way section to represent a collector road's standard for the city. The right-of-way width needed from all lands to the western side. So what we did is, we took the existing footprint for the roadway, and we extended it to 100-foot width to the west side of the existing road. And then segment two focused on, again, the same thing, existing roadway with 60-foot to the west of the existing roadway. Now, this alternative impacted 21 properties, and there was about three and a half acres of wetland impacts. The next alternative, and that's a picture of the alternative, and it shows the various property owners' tracks that we impacted with that footprint of that 100-foot right-of-way and 60-foot right-of-way, which is shown in green. The next alternative took that 100-foot right-of-way, but instead of going to the west, we focused on the east side. So we took that existing roadway, which was in red, and we offset it to create a 100-foot width to the east side. And again, exactly the same with the 60-foot right-of-way. We took the existing roadway, which was in red, and extended it to the east to pick up the 60-foot right-of-way. That alternative impacted 19 properties and about two and a half acres, I'm sorry, 2.3 acres of jurisdictional wetlands. And this is a graphic portraying that alternative, again, from East Terry Street. And this is broken in two panels to the city park site, so that's a match line right here, representing the same locations. Alternative three took the same red path, but what we did is we equalized the takes, so it was on both sides of the, of the existing road, to create a 100-foot width, so 50-50 split. And again, for the 60-foot right-of-way, same condition, 50-50 split centered on the existing roadway trail that extends to the north. This alternative impacted 23 properties and about two and a half acres of wetlands. Finally, the last alternative, I'll go show this. This is a portrayal of that alternative three, and again, the green shows the right-of-way takes, and then the properties affected are shown in circles. The last alternative, alternative four, we kind of took a better evaluation, tried to do the least amount of impacts to properties, existing properties, any improved properties, as well as the wetlands. And this alternative affected 19 properties. It has a meandering right-of-way. It doesn't really follow exactly the center line or offsets equally to one way or the other. It tries again to avoid the wetlands as much as possible. And this alternative resulted in 19 properties being impacted, but only about one acre of wetland impacts. And this shows that alternative, and it's really hard to show, but what it is, it does have, the existing roadway is kind of meanders through the site, so we take a little bit to the, to the west over in the beginning, and then a little bit more to the east side as we get further along to the north. And again, it ends over at the future city park, or I should say, city park site. We also evaluated the no-build it alternative, but that was not very desirable. One, nobody has legal access to the park. And this alternative, while it doesn't impact any wetlands or properties, it doesn't provide the benefit of a legal access for getting to the park from East Terry Street. This is a summary matrix, which actually, the lower grade is the better grade. And from these four alternatives, alternative four was significantly the better choice when looking at all the factors, properties impacted, improved properties impacted, wetlands impacted, and then the overall cost. So the study conclusion basically recommends alternative four. And some of the factors involved is, one, it's a compliant right-of-way with your city standards, meaning land development code criteria. It also provides an open swale conveyance, which I didn't go into much detail, but it improves the drainage locally. That was considered as far as the typical section. It's compliant with the complete streets, so not only do we provide the roadway for vehicles, but we provide pedestrian and a multi- vehicles, but we provide pedestrian and a multi-use path for bicycle facilities. We minimize the impacts to adjacent private lands, again, improved properties. We minimize the environmental, we don't have any cultural resources impacts as a result of doing some archaeological assessment. The roadway infrastructure meets level service for proposed parkland and adjacent properties. We have a low estimated acquisition cost, and it's a lower overall estimated construction cost. With that, I know I run this, through this very quickly, but if there are any questions, be happy to.
About sewer and water? You haven't considered that?
Correct. Thank you.
Stormwater?
Thank you. We did evaluate where the Benita Springs Utilities Infrastructure is, which they terminate at East Terry Street right now. And this corridor does allow for enough room to go and bring and extend utilities within this one-hundred-foot right-of-way up to the northern properties and serve those properties as well. And that is considered, as well as other public utilities, power, phone, cable, and those similar facilities.
Any other questions? Jesse, you have something?
No, I'm good. If we need a motion, I'd like to make a motion for number four.
Absolutely. Second?
Any other comments?
Oh, it does not.
Go call.
Mayor Steinmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes? Councilmember Bogas?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right.
It's our lead now.
Yes.
Or four-four.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This time, I'd like Kevin Mangan to come forward with Stantec. He is going to review. At our last meeting, we provide you with a family of signs as options, and today, in order for the next steps to move forward, so that we can plan for the placement of these signs in our capital improvements plan, is to pick from the selections that we had provided.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
No. Wait.
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, thank you again for having us tonight. Kevin Mangan with Stantec. We have been working, as you all know, on a master signage packaging program. And again, just as a refresher, this is really a tool for staff and council to use, much like, again, the pedestrian and bike master plan, where we can, year in, year out, plan for and understand costs for capital improvement and expenditure into the city that would be specifically for public area signage. And so this presentation you saw two weeks ago really introduced the idea of this is a program for the overall city, which is important. And then three families of signed design type that have developed in time. So tonight, we would like to have direction specifically on a particular signage family, as we call them, and that would give us direction to continue to unfold the details of that family in design, but also begin to further place that and look to the messaging that that signage would bring across the city. Again, first couple of slides, a quick overview, that this package of information will be developed and delivered so that it is a tool for you to use into the future, and that capital expenditures can be made on an annual basis. Again, it's comprehensive and organizing in its thought. This does not necessarily speak to any one area of the city, but overall. And again, as we go through and look at signage in the city, we've broken it down and managed it, if you will, into districts that certainly we can put a language to that are recognizable. And again, so this is representative of the overall city area. The first family, remind you, is one that's really based in a South Florida coastal type of theme, if you will, and materials. Blue, and you'll see, blue is an important color all the way through, both in the logo as well as accent and panel colors in the signage. This signage generally is going to be found based in coral-type stone base, metal-type sign panels and caps. And then it would carry down through with elements of those same things from both your entry points, which was the first slide, all the way down to pedestrian-level signage for streets and use there. Again, on the right-hand side, certain signs we're looking at, and you'll see it in each of these families, beach access signs. Some of these signs and areas are city-owned specifically and city properties, but a beach access way would be something, for instance, we would want to work with Lee County to begin to implement. That's a detail that is true for any family we choose tonight. So the second family is one of a bit more of a, we call historic beach town, and reflecting on some of the more historic or older architectural styles that we can find in the city. And this has really led us to what we call just sort of a simple art deco vernacular. The Lyles Hotel has always been an example for us. And so here you can see, unique and quite differently, we've dropped any of the metal signage work out. We're really looking at, again, cast stone and coral stone. We stay with the blue in the logos. But again, the shape here is one that is really a simplified art deco with a shoulder on each side. This is, again, your main entry, your primary identification signs coming into the city. We go so far as to suggest we're also able to pull into this signage, particularly at this scale, other elements in the city. And you see the palm trees below. Those actually come off the archway over Old Forty-One.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
You have to finish.
We've heard this presentation, Kevin, and you were terrific.
And he finishes.
Well, but I'm just curious, so I'm looking at this sign, and then the man gets out of the car to find out where to go? Like, that's what I don't get. Is where are you directing us?
Please, please.
So that, that really is a representation of scale. That's all that is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's not meant to be stopping the car in the street and, right, yeah. And so, again, as you graduate down from the larger monument sign and entryway signs and the primary identification in the city, we continue with the same materials and shapes through vehicular wayfinding, pedestrian wayfinding, and other signage needs in the city. The third family to choose from is one that we recently, we're choosing on colors and elements that are reflective of the environment. Here, again, you see blue is a primary color in supporting both the sign plate, as well as where we see and would use the logo. Cast stone is, again, another large part of that. And the little blow-up area on the right-hand side, here we're saying, you know, maybe we can implement even a little bit of a three-dimensional play where we bring green and perhaps leaf pattern, things like that, into this sign family. And so this, again, plays itself down in scale, and through the needs that we've identified, vehicular, pedestrian, and then again, key areas in the city, beach entries, we've chosen to represent here that would identify elements like that. And so our request tonight from City Council is to give us the direction of a particular family in which you'd like to see us move forward with. We would continue to develop that in greater detail, be back and forth in council with both the details of that signage family, the further distribution of those signs in the city, and ultimately then move towards a final product.
I make a motion to pick number three?
I'd like to know the cost, sir, of each.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Can we get a second before moving to discussion?
Second. Motion and a second?
For discussion. Thank you.
Any other comments about the motion? Offer a vote?
No discussion. Kevin, would you please tell us what the price would be for family one, family two, family three, if we do this?
So we don't have any defined costs as yet throughout?
So you've never done signs before in a city?
No, what I think what we need to clarify is that the next steps would be location of signs. Each location and the size and mass, irrelevant of which family you pick, is going to have different costs.
Oh, of course.
So a cost by seventy-five is going to be very different than a cost of what we do as a beach sign. So the material, I'll let him talk to the material, but each individual sign will have to be planned. That would be part of a CIP project. You would be voting on, just like you do pedestrian pathways, you would pick and prioritize which ones you would like us to work towards first. There's design that has to be done, and then depending on what roadway it is, it could be require FDOT permits, or it could require county permits.
Or acquiring somebody to give up their... Because I loved what you guys did on living, that's beautiful with the fountains, but we'd have to get the okay from the person who owns that property and to give up the right of the profits that he or she is getting from the signage.
That's not part of this, that we're working on that, but that's not part of this. This is, they're asking, no, it's not. No, it's not at all. They're asking us to pick one of the families, so one, two, or three, pick one that you like. And they went through each one of these with us individually in the meeting. So aesthetically, which one of those do you like is the question they're asking us today. They're not asking us about the location over there or anything else along those lines. They're simply saying, of these, what is most aesthetically pleasing? Which direction would you like them to go forward in?
And again, I have an issue with, like, I don't know where I would go to find lodging. I don't know where I would go to find, unless I get out of the car and look behind the sign?
That's not what we're doing right now. Again.
There's a motion and a second on the floor. Can we have a vote, please?
Wait, was the motion?
Please repeat the motion.
Number three.
Sign, family number three.
Family number three.
Family number three.
That's actually the one that's on the screen right now.
Okay. Okay. Who made the motion? For three?
I like it. But detail, devil's in the details, that's all I'm saying.
Have a vote, please.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
No.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bogas?
No.
Councilmember Purdon?
No.
Councilmember Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeyer?
Yes. Motion failed, I think.
I'll make a motion for family one.
Second.
And comment on that is that it's a metal sign that won't last in this humidity of southwest Florida.
You see?
So are we discussing it?
Devil's in the details.
Okay, so my comment on sign number one is, I'm going to make a wild guess and say that maybe looking at materials, the least costly to produce. Number two is, it's the one that's not going to get tagged, and it seems to be very, very visible and simple and clean. But the tagging portion and what it's going to cost to maintain, I think that's important.
Can you help with that answer?
The materialistically and scale, so this is the first part of that answer, we have similarities. Even in family two, we will be reliant on some metal posts and other things that are part of that. But family two leans a little bit more to concrete and similar products that wouldn't exhibit rust, I think is perhaps the big issue with the metal. Family one, as we talked about, really does play to some of the metalwork and all that we see in our buildings and environment down here. Obviously, it would need to be painted and coated, and there would be some level of maintenance to both families.
So which is the least maintenance-oriented?
To be fair, you have a maintenance budget for all your signs, so that's part of our programming, that we have, just like our parks, there's a, you want, we will have to have a maintenance plan, just like as we do for our art pieces, too, that they have to be cleaned properly or bronzed. So that's all has to be built in in any, any activity that you do.
Right, but which one is the best that we will have the least?
I would tell you that sign one, family, has perhaps the most metal to it.
Not good.
Two and, two and three to a lesser degree.
Yeah, there's a motion and a second on the floor to vote for number one. Call for a vote.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
No.
Councilmember Bogas?
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeyer?
No.
Councilmember Corey?
No.
Motion failed. So I guess we get stuck.
I want to go back to your move, your sign, number three.
What are you talking all the time? I'm trying to run this meeting. Would you cut me a break?
Well, you can do it and be quiet, I'm saying.
You be quiet. Can you do that? Is that possible? Please, please, please. Motion, so, City Attorney, we're stuck with numbers.
You're not stuck.
Motion here.
Motion to go with number two.
Second.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogas?
No.
Councilmember Purdon?
No.
Councilmember Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
No.
All right, so.
Go home.
Here's where we are procedurally. We lost one, we lost one painting as well. We can revisit any of the three options, but only a member of the prevailing side who voted against that option can make a motion to move forward. That would be, so I just want to add that little procedural wrinkle into the process, or you can have a discussion.
You have to vote against it.
See if anything changes.
If you voted against it, you can now change, but if you voted for it, you can't.
Correct. So Councilman Carr indicated a possible, will go to number three. So she, because she voted against it, can make that motion.
Her motion is to accept number three.
Correct.
Which you originally...
Mayor, now you have to be nice to Councilman Carr.
Because you originally...
Yes, I made the motion.
Do you second? Okay, so.
Yeah, vote on number three.
Councilmember Bogas?
No.
Councilmember Purdon?
No.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
No.
Councilmember Folic?
No.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
All right, now, now we're probably going to go round and round.
I have a question for our city attorney. Could we place a motion to narrow it to two? Could a motion be made?
You can absolutely divide it and go into, to limit the options down to two, if that will help you to come to a solution. Alternatively, you may also just indicate what items you like in a free-form discussion and see if that leads to...
So I propose rock, paper, scissors, and everybody, I'll represent one, you can do two, rock, paper, no? do two, rock, paper, scissors. All right.
Do you have a?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we narrow it down to number one and number two.
I'll second that motion.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen.
That's a completely separate from our votes before. Okay, call for a vote.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
No.
Mayor Steinmeyer?
Aye.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Councilmember Bogas?
Aye.
Okay, well, we got down to two.
Do we have any discussion before we?
Well, I guess, you know, one of the, the obvious questions, is it because you want to mix and match, or you're, you're going to just vote on one of those two?
I was going to simply point out a obvious...
Price would matter, but no.
The two, because it has less metal in it, is going to have much less maintenance costs, it's going to look longer, look good longer. Metal in Florida, I don't care, pool cages to finish on them are shot in about fifteen years. Yeah, you can repaint them, but it's a, it's never as good as the first time you got it when you do that. So I think that's why I favor personally two. I like the way one looks, but I think from a practical point of view, two is a better one, but that's just my opinion.
Any other comments? Yes, Jesse.
I hear what you're saying, Fred, and I think, I mean, at the, your initial gut of which one looks better is probably, that's the same way that people who come visit us are going to look. So their first experience, what we look like should be our best foot forward, and we have a budget already to ensure that these things are maintained on a regular basis, and we have a staff who does a great job at it. So I would assume they would continue in that capacity. We can keep them looking good, and then when people get here, they see the best that we have to offer.
So you're one?
Yes.
The motion is to vote on two?
No, we don't think we have...
We're doing a new motion.
So I'll make a motion to, for one.
Second.
What's the vote again now?
Uh, for one, motion is for one.
Okay, call for a vote.
Councilmember Carr?
Still would like to know the cost, which one is going to cost the most and to maintain the most. I'm sorry that I have a focus on fiscal issues, but which one costs the most? Which one is the least expensive to maintain and will last the longest with, we are government light, so I don't want to add more work to people if we could delay it a few months. So which one?
Can the couple woman abstain from voting?
No.
You can't abstain?
No.
No, I'm asking if you...
No, I may not.
You're allowed to.
No, you're not.
We have a vote on the floor. The answer is aye or, or nay.
Okay.
Exactly. And you can't answer that question for me?
We haven't done any costing specifically across these three families yet, and I'll suggest to Council that with selection of a family, that there could be added direction to move towards certain materiality and longevity with a, with a goal of low, lower maintenance.
We're going around in circles on this, so I moved to table the motion.
We're, we're at a vote at the moment.
No, well, it doesn't matter, it's got to be, the tabling motion has to be acted on. So I table, table the motion. We're not, I guess we're not going to get to a decision.
You got a second on it?
Let's do the vote first. One more vote.
Require a second?
So, so, so just to where the path is, if you, if the Council votes to table, to table the motion, we'll set the item aside. If the vote, the Council votes to not table the motion, then we'll continue with the vote.
All right, so can we go?
And what is the vote right now?
For option one. All those in favor of, of tabling the motion?
Aye.
Call the vote.
Councilmember Carr?
I'm voting on what?
Tabling the motion.
So the motion to move forward, we're not doing. And we're going to table this till when?
That's not the motion. That's not the included, we're tabling the motion on, on number one.
Well, I'd like to know how long it's going to be tabled.
Are we, we're voting on one right now, right?
You just said, I thought we were voting on one.
Voting on tabling the motion.
Voting on tabling the motion.
Okay, my, okay, so I misunderstood, then, we're voting and tabling it, okay. All right, we're voting and tabling it, we're not voting on one, we're voting and tabling. So I have a motion that's live on the floor of one, he said we're going to table it, so now we're voting on whether that happens or not to decide whether we go to this next vote.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Councilmember Carr?
You just confused me.
It's tabling it. Do you want to table it or no?
No. Well, are we going to make a decision, though?
That's not included.
Are we going to go around and around?
It's yes or no. Do you want to table it or no?
If you vote to table it, we'll bring it back.
When?
Next year, maybe, who knows?
In the future.
When? Next meeting? Could we have some prices?
When there's a motion to withdraw it from the table, that will be the motion.
Call for a vote.
Councilmember Carr?
I don't want a table, and I'd like to make a decision. I mean, we've got...
Then vote, then vote no, then vote nay.
No, nay, thank you.
Mayor Steinmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Corey?
Yes.
Councilmember Folic?
No.
Councilmember Forbes?
Yes.
Councilmember Bogas?
No.
Councilmember Pardon?
No.
Okay, so now we're, we're voting.
It's too fun, we're not done.
We're voting on...
This far.
We're going to make a decision! Rock, scissors, paper, whatever.
Voting on item, on, on the pending motion, which is Family Number One.
Family Number One.
I like Family Number Three.
That's, that's good, we're voting on Family Number One right now.
Mayor Steinmeyer?
Voting on Number One, no.
Councilmember Corey?
No.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
No.
Councilmember Bogas?
Aye.
Councilmember Pardon?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
No.
Hey, you got Number One, I guess, huh?
Number Three, no. Now I make motion for Number Three.
That motion didn't carry?
We can't, we can't go, because we're only limited to options number one and two. You've divided, you've divided the question.
Let me try a new motion.
That's going to be the cheapest and the least...
I make a motion that we delay to the next meeting so he can come back with recommendations on appropriate metal surfaces, finishes, and all that, and look in a little better on the maintenance.
I second that.
Councilmember Corey?
Aye.
Did we do anything?
So what is?
Yes or no?
Aye.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.
Continue the item.
Councilmember Bogas?
No.
Councilmember Pardon?
No.
Councilmember Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeyer?
So we're doing this again next meeting?
Yes.
I'm going to, I'm going to, just to point privilege, I will not be here at the next meeting, but I will make sure that my partner who is attending will have copies of all rules, and, and I will free-tab the parliamentary procedures for him.
If, if I understand correctly, one of the things you're asking us to do is also come with alternatives so that the same design is shown that's maintenance-effective? Is that, is that what you're, so that...
You, you can do that, right?
That's what I heard from the request from Councilmember Forbes.
And I mean, I mean, I'll, also, what is the maintenance budget that we have on an annual basis? So like, are we worried about something? Are we sitting here spinning our wheels over something that really doesn't matter? And if it doesn't, then can we just move on?
Do we have any signs currently that we're maintaining?
Nope.
So you have no maintenance budget?
Right. So with that...
With the master plan, what we're discussing is, is we would build in the CIP a maintenance budget, there would be a schedule, just like the vehicles that you get a report on, which we were not. We, the vehicle, previously, we were running them until they died, which is completely inappropriate. So we provided you with the mileage of each vehicle and then an end date for that vehicle to be turned in, very similar to the way the fire department runs it. The idea would be there would be a life on each of these signs. With the appropriate materials, we would be able to determine that life coming forward. So I think what you're asking us to do is see if there is a metal, what I understand from Councilwoman Forbes, a metal alternative of material that's less rust-like.
Can I expand on that? Besides that, if you make the metal parts so they can easily be removed, then they can be sent off and professionally refinished. It's harder than H to refinish metal in place.
Can I clarify? What we're asking for is the actual family or design. The next step is determining the cost and the materials most appropriate for the weather and the, and the, and the type of location they're going to be. Each location is going to be different, so this is just a family. It might be tweaked, it might be shaped differently depending on the roadway, depending on DOT issues or concerns. So this is the similarity of the design, that's all we're asking for at this time. There might have to be tweaking to the material depending on the location. For example, we've been discussing signage on the Terry Street Bridge for I-75, the, the feel of that family, you're not going to be able to put any of those signs on a bridge. You're going to have to take the feel and the design of that and implement that onto the bridge in materials that DOT approves. So that, that's the only ask we have. All of those steps, we can't, you're basically asking them to do some engineering design work before you pick your sign family.
Is it fair to say that this is a beauty contest?
Correct, that's all we're asking for at this point.
Sorry to put it in that term, but...
It's true, though.
And you didn't have a consensus amongst the...
So can we start over and maybe we could? No.
We already voted to that, continue the motion, continue it.
But now that Arlene has clarified, the issue, because it wasn't clear in the package.
Like, if everybody's completely tired and done with this, I'm fine with it, but if you are open to it, I will make, I'll make a motion to reopen it, and we can try to put this to bed before we go. But if y'all think it's not going to bed, that's fine, but we're this far.
I'm second that motion.
All right.
Give me a second.
Councilman Pardon, were you in the prevailing side?
No.
Exactly, so.
You can't make the motion to reconsider the continuance.
Fred's motion carries.
I make that motion.
Second. We'll find a way.
And what is your motion, Nigel?
We're reintroducing.
The whole thing over?
Yes, we're starting.
Make a decision.
Yep.
Well, I, I'm, I'm going to call a break in the action, we'll take a ten-minute break, we're back in...
You got a motion?
I don't care what we're doing.
After the vote, after the vote.
After the vote.
We're going to vote on the motion?
Reopening it up again.
Yes.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Councilmember Folic?
Aye.
Councilmember Forbes?
Aye.